It's not how they take him over, but I'm gonna give you a copy.
So you know.
Yeah.
I'm actually bananas.
And then I think you.
Yeah, I don't know. I like this. Brain. Yeah, can you ask me, would you be able to cook that? Sure.
I know.
Especially if you're gonna be cooking like sixteen million burgers or forty fifty.
Yeah. Yeah. I know that's what I put on Saturday, so I'm probably did it. And then he said yeah, play him on Thursday.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's because of the crossover days.
Yeah.
Yeah. Cause he said they have to do, they have to do some um Kansas City.
Something that.
I don't know, I don't know, but how does it go work because uh forests plays map and they lose, so they end up in three way tie.
Yeah.
Because we beat forests across the valley, but they beat the valley on the west side, so it's a three way tie.
Yeah.
So if they do the Kansas City tiebreaker and if they do it on our field. Uh or on your neutral field, that's turf, we may have pretty good chances.
Yeah.
But when we get into those muddy passing fields, our kids don't play this.
Yeah.
Why didn't they do this?
Oh, but those things probably they could say on turf or on Georgia.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They have.
Yeah. Um.
Yep.
Um.
So I have a question for you, cause I don't believe, there's nothing I was gonna bring up at council. So the the pirate truck that they mentioned that we purchased and we had like eight thousand or ten thousand, whatever we made.
It was eighty times. They got like a normal.
Well, yeah, we'll be.
It was about eighty five and higher history, it didn't really happen with it.
Right, so whose truck is it? That's the question, I've been asked that twice. Whose truck is it? And I said, well, I was the city's.
Well, I mean, yeah, but one truck, they supposed to be a distance truck.
Correct, correct.
And we don't have a district for her name.
Oh, I'm like, so maybe that's gonna be the city's.
Yeah. So.
Which I would have done, you have, because I also was beneficial to her.
Yeah. But it is still, you remember just.
I remember.
I don't know. Alright.
Good, just. My head cut off, I just was telling them. Uh the logo that we make, she had that sandwich thing and I actually showed her that. Yeah, I just thought, anyway, I'm supposed to give her the logo all the time.
Oh no.
I'll be here, I'll be here. We're gonna, we're gonna work that. We're gonna get things started. Get all set up for them. Worrying a lot, I remember now, they have a lot of weeds, so.
Do you have the burgers I had in the house?
No, they have, they have, they just have some frozen burgers that they use. And then that's the way they do it, and I said, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's normally what we do, we do, we cook up at that time. But they said, no. And they said, we just cook up our frozen foods, sir. Okay. And then he has that beginning, uh, rocks on, and that's how it comes as rocks on. I was still at the grill and cook coming in and say, here you go guys, I'm leaving. Sir.
Yeah, sir.
I'm gonna leave. You tell that temperature change and I'll say.
Well, it looks still warm yesterday. I was out on my trip sleeping in the barn. But it was like next week or like oh there in like a mid low thirty. Yeah.
What's your saying?
Yeah. And that doesn't change when I looked yesterday.
No, you were, you're on Wednesday, so maybe a little thirty eight, Thursday thirty five, Friday thirty six, Saturday thirty one. Sunday thirty, Monday thirty one, so you have some crazy temperatures. But sunshine.
From.
I had a lot of stuff. I've been up on during the stuff tonight. I'm up there and I haven't seen the thing and all of a sudden looking at this side road, there's a coyote. That's almost beautiful. Though, I mean, it it's a like that here. The sorrows, it's looking at me and I go. Yeah, I see you're pretty, you know, I got my window down and talked to you and she comes home and I come home and I says. I just don't have that killer. When he lives, I said, I want to look at the picture. I says, you know, they would think about two of them.
Yeah. I heard you, uh, Tony has some um excitement in the door.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That was really bad. I was trying to get this situation.
No.
Yeah.
It doesn't count any there.
She was wailing over there and I finally, I went to town and just sat and talked to the neighbor girl. And then I said. Says, are you sure about it? He goes, no, I think, I think that's just for, I don't know what she said, I think that's the. One brother, they have a brother that's so slow, he goes, I'm on, I'm on, I go. I look over and I go. It's not, I said, I think that's him, I said, and she go, what? So then Tony goes up and she goes, yeah, my brother broke my foot. Blah blah blah, so we went on, they're telling you, I didn't, we get on their brother, I was like, call an ambulance. And it's, it's like.
What did she do?
She split on the pass test and caught her foot and it pushes through her foot and it's talking alone and also like asking. It was really.
Eight over.
Yeah, it's really.
Yeah. Wow.
And then, so then the ambulance showed up and I'm trying to help him because it's kind of an awkward spot, I heard it's really narrow and. You know, I heard they didn't come back, so they had a.
She was like thirty years for there.
At the bridge.
At the bridge. Oh, yeah, yeah.
So two guys, yeah, helping and she's in a lot of pain, so they gave her some ass and they didn't faze her.
Yeah.
And they gave her some ass, they didn't faze her. And then he's looking for some other head and this guy looks out of over him and he's a volunteer. And so.
Or he's one of the representatives.
He said, but he always says, he told me, he said, I'm a volunteer, but he said, I'm a paramedic, they think. And said, I'm a volunteer, I said, okay. And so he went to get this shirt and I heard him say.
Kelly.
Yeah. He gave it to her and she just went. Like that, you know, and.
Like how they even breathe it.
Not really.
Oh no. Yeah.
No, they they had to get oxygen on her and they, it was like, it was like she was cold and they they got better than the ambulance, they were on her and finding the other. She's fine, she's in the.
Yeah.
She's a.
Yeah. Wow.
Yeah, that's what I call it.
Probably with. What they already gave her. Yeah. And the job for sure.
Oh, I did, I remember that.
Yeah.
When Tony told me that when we left, she was. Was she okay on that? Oh, and she goes, why they don't know? She goes. Well, I said, did you see? Well, she, she goes, well, yes, she, she, I said, no, she liked this, she was like. Oh.
This guy on the wall.
Yeah, so we, I think it was scary to them.
Yeah. It was scary.
Yeah, I heard it was scary.
Yeah, it's like, it sounds like she's doing better.
Yeah, she's. She's.
We'd be down in the out of the holiday.
All over, yes, yeah, it was bad.
Yeah. Can't.
You don't like your. Arrangement with the mechanic. You don't know.
Sort of the beginning for years. I know, of the. Yeah.
Yeah.
The.
Yeah, it's.
The. But it's not worth it. No.
It's the one from y'all, which is sort of over the back side of the highway. It was up there. But yeah, it was, it was not good. Which was funny, I was standing, I never go back or around twenty nine feet, that side of the house somewhere. Tell them those stories, she goes. You said that word, you missed.
And then you're also.
Then run out of the top, but we were that far away, you're like, we go, it's just a section, maybe three feet. Oh, what? What do you mean, that's a whole section, I said. That word, she was, yeah. Oh, my goodness. We went to the sea last game yesterday.
Oh, we did.
I got in a little watch of the state, Megan and her boyfriend, and they got the tickets. So we went to six of us here. And uh. Chris, Tony, Jayden, Megan, Tony. There was only uh.
Nine.
Three seats out of us, three of us, that's how I agree with. We were slightly in those expectations that game yesterday. That when they had three of us. I said, uh.
That almost makes me angry.
And I did, right?
Oh, yeah.
It was under that. Uh, so then I played on game when I wanted to bowl, with my brother and I, and we sat on the absolute last row.
Okay.
And you could literally turn around and look out on the table.
Didn't I, I mean, you were like, oh, come on.
It wasn't bad, but like, it was a bastard.
Yeah, when you're looking down.
Yeah. Yeah.
You're like.
Yeah, I stood up the whole time we talked and I went, I went, I went. I grabbed myself like, oh my goodness, you fall.
You're never gonna stop. The angle of those seats, it was just.
It's crazy. And I didn't run off my seat, I said, I'm not even. Tell before the water starts, I'm gonna go down to the bathroom later. I said, anyone, I got to step, step, whatever, I did, I'm on, it was, I don't know. Inside this, I just sat up here. I'm like, I'm. We were in the.
We were on the side of it or.
We were almost completely, okay, so you know where the, the, where the, you do the twelve million Toyota thing? You're right, we didn't talk to them, where the white leaders are? We were just up at this side of the white leaders. And then that section. We was undercover.
I sat on the R N wheel, huh?
Yeah.
Futures.
Yeah.
And those are worse than the others.
So I wouldn't know, I wouldn't know.
There, we shared that. And there is nothing there, it's just a feature.
I called my, or I texted my cousin and I said. I said, we're so high up, I said, I heard just my buddy, he was getting dizzy from the elevation. He's sort of hopping the logo here at the top, I go, pretty much. So we're gonna get three of them in the bus.
They did.
They did, except a couple of series, yeah, twenty to ten.
The second round was a month or a third.
Yeah, that that one series, that. Being able to spin through that all the way from the new ride and that was, it's sort of directly to that guy, I don't think it is. But. It was, it was.
About the average of all managers.
Yeah. Maybe can't believe this, man, I still ate the strawberry.
Yeah, I already wanted yesterday too.
Still got strawberry.
I made it while, while yesterday afternoon and I pick it, did everything off.
Did it?
I cut all of the leaders off and everything, every time I threw a berries, it's just too bad, I don't want all energy to go in the planet.
Right, yeah.
So I cut everything off.
Only need to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, isn't that funny? They're still coming on.
Yeah. Yeah, and.
And they started like, like in April.
Yeah, it's.
April day.
Our, our, just, you know, she knew, kind of, we were doing quite that early, we didn't think it'd grow up.
Yeah. I'm trying to remember, it was April or May, I was picking these strawberries.
Yeah.
Might have been May, might have been April, maybe not, but it may June, July, August, September. Six, seven months of strawberry, and it was crazy.
I was, I was, uh, I went down, picked up the strawberry and Amy, um, it's Carlson's daughter.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
She looked down and she goes, did you just eat the strawberry? And I go, yeah. She goes, I've got some cream, that's what she was saying to my wife, and I said, three minutes, I'll get the strawberry.
Yeah.
I said, I'll be right, it'll be fast if you know.
Yeah, you have, you know.
Yeah. I said, I was like, that's not, I don't wanna get it. I asked her, she goes, wow.
Yeah.
She goes, are you really sweet? And I go, no, super sweet, but you're good.
They aren't like the word in the.
No, but all the sun.
I tried to have one yesterday, yeah, uh. It's not quite what it was, but it was still better than the strawberry.
Oh, yeah, it's.
It's.
Absolutely.
Yeah. 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 Hi there.
Hi.
Here.
Probably that tonight.
Huh?
Probably that tonight, and then, cause this is how, they have my personal ones also. Uh, this is to make sure that you, uh. And uh. She's like, well, I mean, I can have my little ones.
Okay.
I don't know. And then, is there anything that aside that we have our more clear, like, come and get drinks, I have water.
I'm good with water.
Oh, just a little, yeah.
I don't have my own water, not already, I can pop it anymore.
As a rule, once in a while, I'm gonna have a strawberry, that's it.
Cause I do a lot of it, I cook for my diet, but I don't have to prepare everyone once in a while, I'm okay. You just check the water. I drink one more pill every day.
I don't like that.
If you have to put a link in there, I don't know, I've seen more where they do that.
Oh, that's.
I just drink one of those, they ain't, I don't have much water, I'm good.
That's a nice trip.
That'll.
Yes. Yeah, there for a while, I would just, we'd be sitting there watching TV and I'd be like. Joe up, telling you, what's wrong, you're on.
I know, I'm like, Danny, in my life, the difference is, or what, my, 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 I'm already bad, and she, she thinks. Now, I'm like, she thinks this is maybe something that's a problem.
Yeah.
Because of, so she still gets up and she still try to have everything, people shooting.
Yeah, I'm gonna love it. I used to take calcium, I used to go.
Yeah.
We just.
But the problems, because of the health thing, so. She was a little bit of a comedian, but now this, now it's started this start. Cool, yeah, but now she's been horrible. And that's the start, she drinks a lot of water.
And you're, you know, probably add, and then we get, decide just to grab, just to turn the water, and hustle to us.
That's.
We like, we're in the house, those things are so painful.
So I'm gonna add, but I'm fully.
I got a woman, I don't care, probably, and Tony goes, she's kind of lying, she goes. Let me look at that, let's turn it, she's like, oh, yeah, you can't, and I'm trying to wipe that thing off, she goes. But there's something, I'm all over this, as I said, I gotta wipe it out, I said. I said, this got released pretty soon. I said, it was out here. She goes, yeah, it was all twisted, like, I go, yeah, yeah, yeah.
We're gonna do more, I got two thousand nine days, he said he talked to you. He talked like an hour.
Yeah, he was, he was up on the G line. And I didn't really do him, I didn't really do him, so I was talking to him on the phone for quite a while. And uh, he's gonna win, he's still, kind of, he's one coyote. Just a beautiful coyote, because I sat in a room and looked at it a little bit.
Yeah.
I think he's in it, and I think he's tailing. The last sister, I'm gonna shoot her, and they release three, sets of holes on the side of the intestines. You ready for that?
No, not. I read about that, yeah, I've been able, probably made someone mad, that I. Yeah.
Yeah.
There.
Please, did you say anything about it?
Yeah, from back, I think.
What's that?
So.
Oh, no, they don't.
It's, it's.
No, yours or ours? Oh, for the guy.
I didn't hear that.
Yeah, it can't hurt, that's for sure.
You don't know that? Did you blow it?
Yeah.
I'm over here.
How do you know?
A little speech. Yeah, yeah, we, we're like, we know. Probably have a little.
Right. And what do you want to do?
We're gonna go in.
Sure.
Well, yeah, you know.
Yeah, it was hard, I said, since I was here, I asked you anymore, did you get this to do a minute, and I didn't.
You're, you're, um.
Yeah.
Um, back tonight, and you want something, should you be besides the.
Um.
Can I have wine?
Brand, uh.
I don't know, yeah, uh, I think so.
Look, you, look, you.
I probably was too busy with them, right? That's.
We're, we're gonna be out there, we'll have a ball, as well. I mean, it's a little.
So we're gonna into the used to in the past. No, someone will go, this one has been sitting here for a while, and that's.
Yeah, I feel. We're gonna.
I thought it was.
Well, I can, I can, I can. I can, I am not to get.
Wrong words, no, I forgot, I'm on, we saw, I was waiting time for that, so I guess, for the moment of the December.
Yeah. Yeah. I didn't.
Uh. Ash, uh, yeah, for like three nights, and then I have four pack for like four nights, so it's. Where it goes, yeah, like I couldn't get it anywhere, yeah.
We.
What's the.
We.
I didn't understand, they used to age, cause I don't know.
Now.
Oh, yeah.
And.
Yeah, I'm sure that. Is it what a baby, what a baby is, so.
My place, but it's gonna be. That it was.
I'm listening to it too.
Hmm. I'm gonna go for my favorite, cranberry, beetroot.
So I did, we canceled that, that house.
Hmm.
And.
I'm not sure.
Which is one we did a few years ago.
Right, surprise you.
Man, we're at that point, yeah, I think the date, you know, they're on, and another group did, and it canceled a little bit of the restoration.
I think I later, that would have been a lot of very much.
So. And we, we still go. Good, basically.
We.
We were gonna stay until like two, three, and then we come home, but we're going to go home Sunday. So we're gonna be basically Sunday.
So I have to change. Oh.
Or, I think I need a better.
Well, you don't have to, but I didn't know you was then, this is.
Or.
But.
Oh, my God. Whenever you're small. You're a little, yes.
You're.
What about that? She's having fabulous.
They're calling me out.
So what's she gonna like, I don't know.
Uh, what is it?
Gonna be ordered burgers, go order.
Yeah, yeah, I ordered it.
I'll call I was on the phone and I'm like, a big cheeseburger, with a mayo, and I'm like, no, no, that's her, no, no. Maybe, maybe she's me and.
And just.
And a big cheeseburger, so.
Oh, I'm just surprised, I do really love.
We got one.
I have that burger, I like it.
I got, I got a couple friends that are.
Give them a look on Dairy Queen with their whole buns.
I just wanted to make you a. I'm like, it's all, I'm gonna.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, Kenny, so I went in and was.
Could it be toasted or any of that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't think you should have ran off to the can, I mean, if you have us, I didn't ever eat it.
Yeah.
Oh, I have some good ones.
So they never made you.
I have a ton of dates, boy, we back up.
They're just gonna, uh, stick it in the.
Yeah, I thought you just saw ours, you have a basket, you have a little, probably, open house, eating marbles, that'll be nice.
A little, and another, and just, uh, hold on.
I haven't heard that, right, sorry.
And, um, and.
I wanna know, like, you know, maybe you can.
And I'll see you hiding out.
It's not too.
But I heard, I think she heard.
Yeah. But.
You guys probably sat there somewhere, go off.
Um, because.
Left.
Yeah, I didn't go there often, but I.
For ten bands. We did those, uh, under a.
I told her, I go, dude, it's terrible.
Can't go.
Wow.
Alright, I'm excited. Oh, and then, uh, I'm like. Same as wrong, but I can.
Murder on the cell, we had.
Yeah, we don't kill anybody. Or our, 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 so.
Yeah. Man, for a lot.
Yeah.
Oh.
I'm walking around the area, yeah.
I'm excited.
So, now, we get all free for us when we're at the.
Yeah.
And it's kind of all around, and I think our. More than there's also, yeah, I think that. Everybody.
What do you think?
Who's.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Yeah, we.
You got a lot of.
Yeah, I know, because. Had a quite a, that. We just didn't meet.
Hmm.
We thought, uh, it's. A school thing.
It's a big crowd, right?
Those are the people, uh, the particles, people.
Yeah.
Sure miss that, any lunch or.
That's what, somebody else was telling me, they said, this is a little.
But, yeah, it's good, because it was the doors all of that, so it's all pretty hot.
Yeah. That's good. This is the thing, they even had them, they even had their strategy, some of them had just. It's not.
They had me do it, I was like, the G.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you can.
No, that hurts, right? That'll be fine.
Yeah.
Other than, than getting.
Yeah, it was nice to be able to have that whole wall open now.
Recording in progress.
Call the meeting to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone. Alright, so, um, I am pretty, I am from the public, uh, let's say Jackson.
Yeah, I'm just here to find out about the tax situation that, um, this, we're not gonna be talking about tonight. So I'd rather wait and listen to what you have to say before I talk, if that's okay?
Um, you'll have another opportunity at the end of the meeting, um, after everything is done.
Well, um, can you please explain what the real, what's the difference for, uh, real and personal property, defining the two?
It's, that's the way it's, it's just property tax. It's.
So the real and property are the same thing? That we're all.
This is, I'm seeing that, yeah, it comes with the property.
Yeah. Yeah.
It's the part of it, it is the property tax, that is what it is, so that's how it works, is real and personal property tax.
And.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, and is this a proposal, or is this in relation to why our taxes were raised so high this last year?
This is a proposal, it's, it's a one percent that is passed every year by the city. Uh, it's mandated by state law that we're allowed to do that, and so.
So you don't have to do that?
Uh, some of our grant opportunities are tied to that, um. They expect us to do our part if we're going to be given money from them, it's, it's not a question, I don't know which grant, it's about on the question that it clicked the box. That it also we either know we did it.
And, and how does that work since our taxes were raised on us to the last year?
Um. Well, it's.
You're gonna raise them, you're gonna propose to raise them, and then.
No, we don't raise the taxes, that's the county, that's the property taxes.
Yeah. Yeah.
This is just a portion, the city portion have the property tax.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah. 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 We need to have your control over your property taxes, that's the assessment, not the government.
Okay.
And, and for everyone involved, um. All of the property owners, to the total amount that comes back to the city. For everyone, not for person, for everyone, on this one percent is two, two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. So it's not a big amount, other person, it's, it's small, that's why, yeah.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah. It's not the, that's the raised amount, yeah.
Yeah.
That's the agreements, that'll be two thousand three hundred and eight dollars for the.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreements.
So our portion is very small, that's, that's the goal, that, that's what the increase will be, is two thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars, so. Yeah, um, it is a small amount per.
Okay.
Property.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. You don't have to say, that's all.
That's what you're reporting, okay?
That's. Yeah, yeah, so this is just our portion of that, which is small compared to what, and, and so that's what you're all in podcasting. Yes, 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 that's all I came for.
They have, now we have, um, the other eight people.
Alright, well, I guess we did have a public hearing, kind of.
So.
Yeah. This, our, yes. But.
I have two things, one, uh, I think Luke is well aware of this so-called blue building along the highway off California. Uh, it's, there was a court complaint, I think, a file two or three years ago. About the different derelict trucks and cars and so on, uh, since that time, the. There's been mow, some mowing of the grass and the blackberries and stuff, but all, I think all of those old ancient vehicles, trucks and so on, are still there. Looks like the neighbors may have added a number of other maybe licensed vehicles now. But, and I looked up today, I see the taxes have been. But, and I looked up today, I see that the taxes have been paid, uh, so my question is. What's, what's an update, is, like, has there been citations, uh, filed, or anyway, what's an update? So then my other thing is, I noticed a few long ago that this, typical regional library is designated this month, which begins, begins in the middle of the month. As Filipino American History Month. And uh, while I was in the Raymond Library, I noticed they did have a large display of Filipino-American history type related books. Yeah, I, that, that's sort of in relationship to your last discussion on flags and heritage months and so on, so that's it.
Okay, alright, anyone else in the public? Okay, so move on to item four, I'll entertain a motion for the agenda, the consent agenda, and the list from October nine, twenty twenty-three.
Well.
Put your shoe on a second.
I'll second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do we have any correspondence though?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's now five thirty-six, and we'll open the public hearing on ordinance number fifteen ninety, levy an attack on real and personal property in the city of South Bend. So is there anyone from the public that we wish to speak to that? We've kind of had a short discussion already on.
It's ready to sit, Craig.
Okay, mine is frozen, so. Hey, very good, okay, go ahead, Craig, my, my computer froze up, will you?
No, no, no problem, can you hear me first, I have a brand new computer, I'm not, good, um. Who would be the best person to run me through the math on this? Because I know I'm not correct when you, when I'm thinking, one percent every year is going to, in a hundred years, you're gonna have a hundred percent of the tally. I know that's not the way this is being calculated, it's percentages of percentages, and the engineering part of my lizard brain, at some point, I, you guys keep doing this every year. And I would just like to walk through the math somewhere. Does it ever go back down if the county assesses us for less, does it go, uh, like, how does this actually work? Who's the best person to ask, off, offline from the meeting here?
Yeah, yes, the chef's office would be who to go to for that, they've got the full breakdown on all the tax structure and everything.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, you got it. Alright, anyone else in the public? Alright, it's five thirty-seven, we will close the public hearing on ordinance number fifteen ninety. Now we'll move on to item seven, which is the actual ordinance fifteen ninety, and I would entertain a motion to approve. For the first reading, the first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, and a second, and this would move it to the second reading, so is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Are any opposed? Alright, motion carries. So hear this again at our next meeting, so moving on, well, yeah, at our next regular schedule, council, yeah, at our regular meeting. So moving on to Department Head of Reports, Police Chief Steeple.
Um, I have nothing, but I can give a quick update on, of Bob's not here anymore.
Go ahead.
You guys want nothing on it?
Sure.
Um, so we just started tagging vehicles and stuff to count, and that property has been on the list as far as overall property maintenance issue. Um, we've addressed, like Bob said, some of the, uh, briars and the grass and stuff, but just since Friday, there's been four vehicles that Officer Corrigan has tagged. So we are working on it, it, it's a process, it's gonna take some time, but it, it is not being, you know, dismissed by us, so. That's all, man.
Okay, Supervisor Hauck?
Um, I don't have too much, and then thank you, Officer Corrigan, fantastic job for the force, I appreciate it, I think the whole city does. Um, everything's running smooth in West Department, and uh, there's not a, you know, we're neither, bring it up.
Okay, Professor Shaw?
I don't have nothing, just to remember five o'clock on Wednesday for the budget workshop.
Okay. And I don't have anything on my report either, so we'll move on to any public comments regarding current agenda items, which was the public, uh, the property tax thing. There's not a fear that there is, so we'll move on to council comments, and let's start with Councilor Porcrey.
I'm good, everything looks good.
Okay, Councilor Kayden?
I think I'm, I'm good, cause we're gonna be here a lot later this week.
Yeah, Councilor Mallow? Councilor Davis?
I'm good.
Councilor William?
Hello.
We are adjourned, thanks everybody. Only, we have the future agenda topic, sorry, I missed that. No, okay, now we're adjourned, sorry.
Recordings.